Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Up and Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash ten has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Ms. Lozio, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson. Ms. Beauties. Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Finkelstein.
Here.
Ms. McLean.
Here.
Mr. O'Carapi. Sam. Mr. Horus.
Here.
Mr. Polari.
Ally, I'm here.
Mrs. Power.
Here.
Ms. Mr. Rajah.
I'm here.
Mr. Sika.
Here.
Mr. Taffet.
Here, good morning.
Good morning. Yes, Madam Chairman, we do have a quorum.
Okay.
Good morning, Kyle Anderson is here, sorry.
Thank you.
And Christy Beautis, good morning.
Thank you, Christy.
Do we have any correspondence, Mr. Lozio?
None today.
All right, thank you. And Dr. McCormick, do we have a presentation?
Chairman Power, we do. So I'm so very proud of everything that our faculty and staff do. But there's one thing that happens since I've been here at the college these seven years that I'm extremely proud of. We've often been involved for a long time in what we call service learning, where faculty members and courses design activities involving the external community and tie the learning of the classroom to serving and working with people outside the college. It's a great way to get students actively involved in learning outside. And experiential learning has shown to be a positive impact on retention and on graduation and on engaging students in a way that creates better citizens as they leave us and go on to the next step in their journey. So I want to introduce three people who are going to do a little presentation on service learning. Dr. Jennifer Altman, professor of sociology. Dr. Alexandra Fields, Alex, a special professor of English. And Ariana Illa, the coordinator of civic engagement and experiential learning, are going to introduce the topic and share with you some examples. And so I turn it over to Jen, Alex, and Ariana.
Sorry, forgot to unmute myself.
There you go. Morning, Jen.
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Altman. I am a I am a sociology professor and co-coordinator of service learning faculty here at the college. I've been at MCC since 2009, when I originally came to Direct Democracy House Center for Civic Engagement. My doctoral work was on campus community partnerships. So I'm thrilled to share with you our service learning program, which embeds a service and civic engagement component into an academic class. And I'm wondering. I don't know if we have Alex on the call, so, right, Ariana? So you should just go, yeah.
I don't see her yet, Jen.
I don't see her either. So I'll jump in. Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Ariana Illa. I started my career at Middlesex in 2014 as the program coordinator for Democracy House, which is our Center for Civic, I'm sorry, our Centers for Community Engagement and Civic Leadership. We just, we just tweaked the name a little bit. I've been in my current role as the coordinator of civic engagement and experiential learning for about three and a half years. And that is with our Department of Civic Engagement and Community Partnerships. So my main role with the service learning program is to coordinate and manage our partnerships and the logistics when it comes to working with students. So because of the nature of this work, and I wanted to throw this in before we start our video, we can't exactly quantify the number of hours students have completed as a part of this program. But it's safe to say that both direct service and indirectly, they've completed thousands of hours of service with our community partners. We're hoping you get a sense of the impact service learning has on our partners, faculty, and students through the video that we've created. So if Alex still isn't here, and I'm not seeing her. John, you can start the video.
Service learning is a teaching method used to link course content to real life experiences that focus on a community need or social justice issue. Community partners include local nonprofits, government agencies, and community-based organizations. Faculty work with community partners to develop projects that meet the community partners' needs, while also enhancing students' learning of the course content. Simply put, service learning helps students gain knowledge by tackling problems faced in their communities. Students integrate their service experiences with their coursework through ongoing reflection and class assignments. Students who engage in service learning have been shown to feel more connected to the college community, have a better understanding of the course content, and a deeper insight into the social issues faced by local communities. Service learning is a movement within higher education that has grown significantly over the last decade as colleges have come to realize the importance of their role in teaching students to become civically engaged members of society. This work also serves to expand and support campus community partnerships by offering college resources that support community needs.
Although faculty have incorporated service opportunities into classes at MCC for many years, it was only four years ago that the college designed a full service line program as a result of faculty interest and community need. After researching how peer institutions successfully implemented service learning, we developed a one-year training model for faculty. This model has evolved over time to ensure that faculty are creating collaborative partnerships and meaningful student learning experiences.
Because English Composition Two is a class focused on academic research and argumentation, I structured the class around the theme of criminal justice reform. And students registered for the class in advance, knowing that this was a special topics English class in which they would meet and work with detained youths. Throughout the semester, then, students learned how to engage in academic research and develop argumentative essays. And they shared this knowledge with their peers at the Juvenile Detention Center, so that everyone had the tools needed to write argumentative and research-supported essays. This work then culminated in us creating a class book that contains each student's essay and a reflection letter on the experience, which both the students and the JDC residents got to keep. Students also developed and shared class presentations together with their JDC partners at the detention center, in which they articulated the arguments and key findings from their research.
When, in juvenile detention centers, the kids that we were seeing coming to the facility, which was supposed to be a short-term stay facility, they started staying longer and longer and longer. So I was really looking for something for the kids that have graduated high school or were getting ready to graduate high school to continue with their education so that they can transition, whether they go home or to a program or to a facility. They may be growing and learning and evolving.
We would go into the Juvenile Detention Center, and I was partnered with Dylan, and he decided to write his essay on juvenile justice reform, and I also chose to wrote about that as well.
Now I have a slew of faculty that I can actually collaborate with. And the students see that I'm working with faculty in other disciplines. So I'm in the natural science department. They see me working with an English professor or a math instructor or a business instructor. And that really sets the precedent for them to see that collaborating and teamwork, a monumental change for me, having like-minded faculty to work with. For me, it's just not a cleanup, because the bonds that they create while they're working together in the field, then they bring them back into the classroom.
From my work, my past work, I always dealt with career pathway. And, you know, teach students that it's so important to gain experience, network in order to get into their career of their choice. So, you know, service learning, they're actually meeting those networks. And, you know, I even have students now, students are actively reaching out to their partners to get suggestions on which direction they need to go. So the fact that I'm seeing them take an initiative, to me, that makes me proud as a professor.
When I was contacted by you guys, we saw this as an opportunity to start collecting data about our clients so that we could further help them, right? So we wanted to ask them questions about their lives. We wanted to ask some meaningful questions about about, about their food, about their food insecurity, about their situation, so that we could hook them up with better resources. Each of them would, would interview a client and fill out the survey with the client, and then take that information back to the class to collect and organize the data for us. So that was really wonderful. It has impacted us in a great way. We kind of understand our client base a lot better because of the information that the students collected and the data that they were able to bring back to us.
Professor Lakshmi's class helped me devise a business plan and social media plan. My paperwork and all of my data and incorporating with information that they had learned and composed this really great piece of work. And it was a good opportunity for me to work together with the students who had this strong background in business and marketing. So it's good for me to be able to bounce these ideas off of them. But also, it was just nice to feel involved with the community and this community that Middlesex County involvement with the power students. And I think that they really went above and beyond the expectations of the project to really become a part of my organization for a little while. So I'm thankful.
This program means a lot to our kids here. They don't take it for granted, and they appreciate the fact that even though they're not earning college credits as of yet, but we will do in the future, they still work really hard and they really try and enjoy being part of an actual college class. The parents are really, really thrilled with the fact that we're offering this year for their child. The kids here would love the fact that they were able to stick with other actual college students. Some of my kids didn't even know what college was, and some of the kids actually explained it to them, and they started to enjoy it.
This is something I wondered. And I love writing, I love writing, and this is a lot of writing, I love to do this, but it's more experience. And I wasn't, because I wasn't really going to school at home, and this gave me like positive effect. To make my daughter proud, my mother proud, my family proud, the U.S. proud.
The class did help. It gave me a foundation to understand what's actually happening amongst some of the students when they're explaining it. But then it also did fuel that fire within myself to say like, hey, yo, this is something that needs to matter.
Essentially, as somebody who was affected by homelessness, being able to offer meals and not only meals, but companionship. So being able to make this path easier for others, it means more than anything to me.
So before the service learning program, I was ready to drop out of college. I was a biology major, and I just did not enjoy it. I thought college was not for me. It was not something I was interested in anymore, and I was getting to my last wits with it. Then I saw all the kids. I saw the work that Alexis, the social worker, does. And I realized that this is what I had to do in life. This is what I wanted to do. It was my calling, and I finally found it. And ever since, I'm determined to succeed and get my degree.
Since it began in 2016, the service learning program at Middlesex has increased its course offerings each semester. Twenty-one service learning classes across academic disciplines were planned for spring 2020. Fifteen virtual service learning courses were offered this past semester, and fifteen virtual service learning classes are planned for spring 2021. The number of service learning partnerships has also increased steadily since the program's inception. We have worked with over 25 community organizations within Middlesex County and over 200 students this past semester alone.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to jump on, of course, never a dull moment when you have to get on at eight same time as your children. So I apologize, but I'm Alex Fields, and I'd hope to also introduce the video. But I wanted to just say hi quickly, and obviously, if there are any questions.
Excellent. How are you doing?
So I want to thank Jen and Alex and Ariana and people who helped them, especially the media services team. This video was a collaborative effort between the three of them and the great work that Nick Goulend team do, so thanks for that. And other questions or comments for Jen and Alex and Ariana?
Quite a list of organizations, my goodness. Wonderful.
Madam Chair, this is Andy Polari. I just want to congratulate the team. Excellent course. To me, this is where the rubber meets road. And, you know, bringing and social involvement is extremely important. People tend to mistake the social service as political. It is not. It is about helping people out, those who are in need. Absolutely, it's very inspiring, and I'm so glad that the Middlesex College is offering this kind of courses. One thing that I do want to bring it to the attention of the trustees and those on this call is that, you know, I come from a corporate world, and many of you know that I'm an engineer. Inclusion and diversity is a huge item these days in corporate world. And while we're beginning to see some strides in gender equality, we don't see that yet in having the professionals in, you know, diversity in terms of skin color. I think that's something that we should promote, and I know that the Middlesex Community College does some good work. Bringing them into the engineering fields and professional fields is extremely important. So I just want to make that point as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we may continue on to committee reports.
Chairman Power, before you do, can I interrupt? We forgot to approve the minutes in the last meetings. Can we do that first?
Did we do that? We did not.
Let's go back and do that. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. I have a motion to approve the annual and regular minutes for November 16th, 2020.
I'll move that. Second.
Who moved it?
Bob Sika.
Bob Sika, and seconded by?
Cortez.
Rush.
Claire Bell. Thank you. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Okay, now we can go into the committee reports. Academic and Student Affairs, Prof. Rajah.
We do not have any resolution, any more things if Dr. Shear has anything to say. Otherwise, have happy holidays.
Dr. Shear, yes, no?
I'll give a brief update. Thank you, Chairman Rajah. The Academic and Student Affairs Committee met on December 9th, and we had several presentations. Dean Megan Ali presented on the Fall Enrollment Fact Sheet, which is information that you have in your packets on our fall enrollment, our top sending high schools, the students' majors, and some demographics. Executive Dean Loriano presented on winter and spring enrollment and recruitment initiatives. President McCormick and Vice President Perrin presented on the potential expansion, extension of the three-year strategic plan into a five-year strategic plan to continue our current strategic plan and augment it. And I provided an overview of the pilot of a new program viability review program initiative and our plans for the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act proposal. And I also just wanted to add, I'm so pleased you have the opportunity to hear about our service learning initiative at Middlesex. This is a, it's a really wonderful opportunity, as you got to see. We have several of the faculty and some students on the call today, and we're very proud of this program. And it's a model across the state, and you got to see the impact on our students, the impact on our community partners and the people we serve. So thank you very much. That's all I have. We don't have any resolutions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair? Yes. I just, I have a quick comment. I just want to compliment the team for the enrollment fact sheets and the presentation on the program viability, and also to acknowledge the, the success of their new developmental education efforts and the trajectory that the college is going on. So just wanted to give a shout out to the faculty and to the administration for the success of their program.
Thank you. Okay, so we may go on to finance. Mr. Finkelstein.
Thank you. Good morning. Is Mr. Malteino on the call?
He is not marked, so Jeff Herron will be the one you can tap.
Good. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Finkelstein. The Finance Committee met on December 9th and discussed various issues related to resolutions presented today for review. Today's resolutions contain matters considered during November and include awards of contracts and their cooperative purchasing agreements, including items to expand the college's wireless capabilities into certain parking lots and other items to expand the IT infrastructure, along with items focusing on supporting disinfection protocols and limiting transmission opportunities for students and employees coming to campus. Dead items are also addressed, including architectural engineering, consulting, and legal services. It also authorizes payment to vendors under contracts for services, including grant writing, expanding our capabilities under the Zoom platform, and additional services from the college's audit firm. So we have six resolutions today for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolutions I through six A.
Second.
By Mr. Finkelstein, seconded by Mr. Rajah. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstentions?
Abstention on resolution number one, please.
Okay, got that, Sally? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Mr. Horus.
Good morning, everybody. Mr. Morgan, you have a report for us? Yes, good morning. Thank you. On December 9th, the HR Committee of the Board of Trustees met, and we discussed 35 recommended items in total in the areas of change of status for employees, separations, and miscellaneous employment items, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on those.
Mr. Horus, you want to, is there a motion for this?
Yes, Chairman Powers, I would like to make a motion to approve all resolutions in the categories of change of status, separations, and miscellaneous.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. The motion is carried.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't think I was heard, because I may have muted myself. But on item five, under Finance, I wanted to make sure that I was listed as an abstention, which I did abstain in the committee meeting on this topic as well.
Okay, did Mr. Finkelstein also abstain on that one?
No, on resolution number one.
Number one, right, okay.
Thank you.
Ally, are we okay on that? I guess she's muted.
You're on mute, Sally.
There we go. Yes, I have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. And that one is, all in favor, opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're all set there. General. Mr. Finkelstein.
Motion to approve resolution number one.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Rajah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Motion is carried. Thank you. Report of counsel?
There's no report, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Report of the president?
Chairman Power, I want to first thank again, I think they may have left the call, but Professors Altman and Fields and Ariana Illa for that great presentation on service learning. I want to echo what Linda Scher said. We're extremely proud of the work that our faculty and staff are doing, but the impact is felt in three ways. Certainly, the students get experience, as Mr. Polari pointed out. The community benefits, but also the faculties you heard benefit as well. So it's a win-win-win. And we want to do more of that, and I'm really proud of the work that our team has done so far. So again, thank you to Jen and Alex and Ariana for all the work they do in that regard. So I'm going to show you a few slides here just about what's happening this time of year. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this is a season of light, as Mr. Raj was talking about before the meeting began. Many faith traditions talk about light. At this time of the year, when in northern hemisphere, it's dark. And so one of those traditions is, is the season of Diwali. And we had a great, we had a great celebration of Diwali a few weeks ago on Zoom, and I was surprised how much you could celebrate and dance and sing and enjoy each other's company on Zoom. So thanks to the members of the two clubs that sponsored that event, and the faculty and the students, it was a great event. Next slide. We also, as you see here, a picture of one of the sponsors, Lakshmi Nagarajan Iyer was there, and the smiles on their faces, you can tell people were having a great, a great time. Next slide. We also held our annual campus holiday party on Zoom, and that was last week. We had about 200 people on the Zoom, and while we couldn't be in person to dance and sing and enjoy each other's company, we were able to have events on the Zoom, including a trivia event and a contest with people singing and a contest with ugly sweaters. Next slide. Here's a photo of one of our department chairs doing a Janis Joplin number, great, great routine by Annie Hogan. Next slide. A lot of us there in various costumes, including people's pets dressed up for the holidays. Next slide. And some of the ugly sweaters from years past. And Don Dros, I must say, won the contest two years ago. So congrats to Don and his family and team for doing that. You can see on the left there, Oday Hafi was the ringmaster and master of ceremonies. He and Kevin Delina did a great job of planning for the event and coordinating it and getting us all in the spirit, even if it was on Zoom. Thanks to everybody who made that happen. Next slide. So in addition to doing what we do with service learning, there's other ways to take care of our community. Next slide. You can see here a picture of Amanda Lyons, our coordinator of the Basic Needs Center. And we introduced a new option for providing food for our needy students, students who are, who have food security or hungry. The hospitality program has had the chance to create food, students and faculty, that they then freeze safely, and we have it in a freezer in the MCC food pantry. And so now we can give out freshly made prepared meals, in addition to things that are just boxed and on the shelf. So here's Amanda with some of the frozen food prepared by our students for students in need. Next slide. We had a great event giving day nationally, trying to get people to think about ways to use their philanthropic largesse to help others, and we raised about $17,000 in a 24-hour period for the MCC Foundation, focused mainly on students and their needs. Next slide. And it's sad to say farewell, but it's also the beginning of a new journey. And so there's many farewells today. I want to start by saying it's not quite yet time to say farewell. We want to say farewell and Godspeed and great success on your next journey. To trustee Claire Bell Cortez, Claire Bell's been a great addition to this board. We've loved having you on. Your spirit is, is great, and you focus on students. So we wish you well in your next steps as a council member in North Brunswick. Next slide. We also have seven full-time employees who are retiring this month, and I want to show them in alphabetical order, but come back to two of them at the end that I have a personal connection with and want to say a few words about. So these are the names of each person, their title, their department, and the years of service. So first, we have Dean Marla Brinson. Next slide. We have custodian Shirley Davis. Next slide. We have my assistant and right-hand Sally Delosio. Next slide. We have a longtime faculty member in physics, Josephine Lamella. Next slide. We have a great faculty member in dental hygiene, Risa Levy. Next slide. We have a fantastic member of the library staff, Pam Olson. Next slide. We have a longtime member of the IT department, who's going to be sorting this, and who has done a lot of things to get us where we are today in terms of serving each other in IT, Ed Reed. Next slide. So go back to the screen there. Thank you, and off the video. So you take that aside. Thank you. So two of the ones I want to say in particular words about meeting with Sally. When I came to this role three years ago, I'd already worked with Sally some as the vice president. I had great respect for you, Sally. But I got to say, you've helped me learn this job, and you know a lot about the college. You know how things really work, where the bodies are buried, and it's been invaluable to have your guidance and your assistance. You know how things really work, where the bodies are buried, and it's been invaluable to have your guidance and your assistance. You're going to be sorely missed. So thank you for all you've done for the college for your many years, Sally, especially what you've done to help me in my role. I can't thank you enough. And I want to say a few words to Marla as well. So I had the, the great fortune of meeting Marla Brinson 30 years ago when I worked at Community College of Philadelphia. I was a faculty member, and Marla was in Student Life, and I was a club sponsor, the Paralegal Club. So I got to work with her a lot on club events and on budgets and things, and she was very helpful to me, very helpful to our students, and I watched with passion, with, with how much passion she had in the work she did, and was always amazed that she has such energy and that students really, really appreciated what she did for them. So fast forward many years later, I came to Middlesex County College seven years ago, and lo and behold, I get to work with Marla again. Marla was here as dean of Student Affairs. I got to work with her directly for many years, and I'm still impressed, Marla, every day by the passion you bring to the work you do, by the impact you have on our students and on all of us. I can't thank you enough. You're going to be very sorely missed. But we wish you well in the future, and Chairman Power, that's my report for the board.
Thank you. I would like to add my comments to this as well. Marla, you are leaving a legacy with tons and tons of memories never to be forgotten. I will miss you in the halls and your smiling face so much, but good luck to you and in your retirement. I'm sure you will enjoy it. And Sally, your craft is exemplary, Sally. We will miss your presence, but your signature will leave a mark, a mark on the minutes and also with the special skills that you provided for us over the years. And to Clarabelle, it was a short time with us, but you did leave a mark, and also you will be connected with us so that we didn't really leave, we didn't lose you completely, but I'll thank you for all of your talents while you were here with us. Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you. And Madam Chairman, can I say a few words?
Yes, please.
Yes. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. This year has been a tough year for many of us, but it has been a great year of working with everyone here. It was a tough decision to decide which way to go, but I will always be of service to MCC, help me in. And every single person here, I'm sure you know, but I want to say this, that you are creating multi-generational impact, because that, what, that's what education is. When you touch one life, you're going to touch many other lives moving forward. So thank you for what you do in our community and helping communities move forward. It's been an honor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Clarabelle.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I, is this the appropriate time? I'm sorry, I'm.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I said it at the committee meeting, but I'd be remiss if I just didn't say it again. Number one, Sally, thank you for covering all of my deficiencies and making sure that I showed up to all the meetings that I screwed up on my calendar. So no, I just want to say thank you very much. I think you've been very helpful and conscientious and have the boards and the colleges' best interest at heart. I think those will be big shoes to fill, and I just, I'm very appreciative of how you've treated me these, these past few years in terms of access to information and responsiveness. So thank you, number one. Number two, Clarabelle, Councilwoman, your, your tenure was short, your impact is long. I've really personally enjoyed having you and your perspective on the board. I think that you brought a huge dimension as we got into this whole concept, especially with communications and outreach, and I'm sure that you will be an important advocate, even though you may not be a member of this college board going forward. I'm sure you'll be a huge advocate for what it is that, that we believe in, that you believe in, and I'm looking forward to crossing paths with you again, and I'm sure the residents of North Brunswick are very fortunate to have you with them. So I'm sorry, it wasn't longer. I think that was a great component that you brought to the board among others, and I think those, those are going to be big shoes to fill as well. So I just, those are the two in particular. And I, and you know, I'm, I, while I didn't deal as much with Marla just by virtue of how much, where I spent my time and attention, an incredible tenure, you know, for the, for the college and incredible asset, and those people that understand academics, and I'm not always one of them, have always told me what an incredible job you've done. So thank you, you know, for the service and all the time that you've given us. So those are, you know, three real and significant losses. Thankfully, the board and the college overall are in, you know, good position to, to weather that and move forward productively. But that's a lot of talent to be exiting at one time.
Dr. McCormick, if I could just echo what trustee Taffet said, wishing everyone the best. Sally, thank you also for, for, you know, welcoming me and, and helping me learn the ropes. And to Clarabelle, best of luck to you. And Marla, thank you for your enthusiasm with encouraging our students to take leadership roles and engage in different programs and such. It was really a pleasure working with everyone. Additionally, Dr. McCormick, I do want to acknowledge all the other folks that you mentioned who are retiring as well and wishing them the best. So happy holidays to everyone, and thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of the college.
Anyone else from the board?
Oh, Dr. Brinson. I just want to add on to those comments and just, Sally, between your constant communication with Debbie to make sure that I showed up on time for these meetings, I was totally appreciative. You're always there for us with communication to make sure that the county office and the county college were synchronous in, in their efforts towards helping our students in Middlesex County. I'm going to miss you, and you're always just a friendly face to see whether it be on a Zoom call or live and in person in your office. But thank you very much for your support all the way throughout. Councilwoman Cortez, you know, again, your, your tenure here was short, but I've watched your career now for a few years, and our loss is North Brunswick's gain, and I'm wishing you well, and I'll be supporting, supporting you from, from afar. But I think that our paths will continue to cross, and, and I know that you'll still be very supportive of Middlesex College during your time there. And Marla, 29 years is, is something to say. It's nothing to sneeze at. When you're here 29 years, the impact and the lives that you've touched will go on well, well, well after you're, after you leave here. So thank you very much for your service to the college, and as my trustees before me said, it's a huge loss. December is never easy for any, any institution as retirements come and departures happen. But I believe that the impact that you've made has left us in good hands. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to thank everybody for their service and in their retirement to have a good time. And Sally, it's going to take me a long time to delete all emails I got from you.
Sally, you are the best, and, and thank you so much. Madam Chair, Marla always made a smiling face and, and, and helped us in using the graduation time. And, and the councilwoman, thank you for you.
Okay. I understand Khalid is with us. Khalid?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Again, it's always a great honor and pleasure to participate in these meetings. I always walk away with something new and something that's beneficial to me personally when I attend these meetings, and I'm really grateful to the entire Board of Trustees for your leadership and Dr. McCormick's leadership and all the faculty. This presentation was so incredibly moving, and it just demonstrates what an incredible job the college is doing in terms of innovation in trying to not only just build the, build the educational capabilities of the students, but with service learning, you're also building their character and developing the skills that they need to make service an objective and a goal, and linking that with their skills is outstanding and a great example of innovation. And I, I just want to commend the board and the trustees and Dr. McCormick and his team for all the great work that they've done. Also, I want to, you know, congratulate Sally and Marla, and congratulate them, and of course, Councilwoman also for her success. And that's, that's the only comments I have to make, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. On behalf of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, Field Director, Field Deputy Director, and all the other freeholders, please accept my congratulations to the board, to the trustees, the retirees, the honorees, and for the wonderful programs that you put together. Thank you.
Thank you for your wonderful words. Anyone else from the board?
Madam Power, I would just like to say a quick thank you to Sally for helping me onboard as the alumni representative, and congratulations on your retirement. A good luck to your future endeavors and as well to Clarabelle. It was a short time, but it was great working with you and to Marla. I did not know you, but thank you for your service to the college as a former student, and good luck with your retirement.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Okay, so shall we move on? Is there any old business? No? Any new business? I guess we've taken care of all that.
Well, Chairwoman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you, if you'll indulge me, just a quick update from the New Jersey Council of Community Colleges. Okay, thank you. I, I know Dr. McCormick and I met. We had a board meeting not too, not too long ago. I just want to update the board that the, the council is still pursuing to get the CCOG program into statute. I know that's moving through the legislative process as we speak. Additionally, they are very focused on their pathways program related to certain industries, especially healthcare, and they are putting together a very robust legislative agenda to move forward. We are also, you know, working on making sure that they have funding for their basic skills program, something I understand was, was cut recently, and, and so those are some of the updates. A lot of, a lot of focus on making sure that the community colleges are able to be in a great position with the, with COVID-19 to, you know, rescale and, and train folks moving forward. So a lot of, a lot of efforts being done by the, by the, the council and the consortium.
Thank you for the update. Okay. It is, now is time for the public comment. Section 7.4 of the Board of, of the Board Bylaws governs public participation at board meetings. Pursuant to the provisions of the Bylaws, the following protocols will be observed. Only those individuals who registered at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. But the Assistant, Assistant Secretary of the Board will be called upon. A college staff member will announce your name in the order in which you registered and unmute you. Please be sure your name appears on Zoom and matches the name that you used to register. Preface your comments by announcing your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. You will have three minutes to speak. Please direct any questions to me. A college staff member will announce when 30 seconds of your time is remaining, and again, when three minutes are up, you will be muted at the end of your comments or after these minutes, three minutes. Mr. Delosio, has anyone registered in advance to address the board?
Yes, Chairman Power. Four individuals have registered.
Thank you. First up will be Charlie Kravatil. Your three minutes starts now.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. I do want to wish a happy retirement to all those who are parting ways with the college. Thank everyone for their work. This board is going to come to regret changing your rules to require the public to sign up 24 hours in advance. There was no basis for it other than limiting and, and creating another obstruction to the public having input here. And now you see more people signed up to speak. So I think you'll come to regret that. I have a limited amount of time, so I have some, some yes or no questions to start out with through you, Madam Chair, for Mr. Taffet. Mr. Taffet, is it true that your company, your insurance company is a wholly owned subsidiary of Accra Shore, the company that provides services to the county, does business with the county?
Just say, state your comments, please.
That was a question through you, Madam Chair, for Mr. Taffet.
State your comments.
Are, are you refusing to have Mr. Taffet?
Please state your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, so you're refusing to, to forward the question to Mr. Taffet? Okay, well, I believe that his, the parent company Accra Shore is actually currently under investigation by the State Attorney General's Office. Did you hear about that, Madam Chair? Okay, did you know that Mr. Taffet had to pay $725,000 in disgorgement interest and a civil fine to the Securities and Exchanges Commission pursuant to Section 21A? Are you aware of that?
Please state your comments.
Okay, I'm trying to ask questions. In the past, I've been able to ask questions, and I've gotten answers, but apparently you don't like these questions and you don't have good answers. So I'll just move on. I'll say Mr. Taffet should resign his position. This should have been disqualifying. He should not have gotten the position. And that lawsuit that Maureen Lawrence brought, Mr. Hoffman said last time that the allegations were false, but I looked at it, and the one allegation that I was able to fact-check was actually true, and that's that you, Ms. Power, were on this board illegally for 20 years. You had a job with the county starting in 1997, and you were appointed to this board starting in 1997. And only after Maureen Lawrence brought it to John Hoffman's attention in October 2017 did you have to resign that county job. Can you please confirm that and tell us, you know, why you were breaking the law for 20 years?
30 seconds.
There's also some allegations in there about Mr. Finkelstein and the ESCNJ. Is it true he gets a commission? Or is it true that the ESCNJ gets a commission for the contracts that the MCC goes with them for? This board, in refusing to answer questions, is disgracing your office. You have a responsibility to the public. You've already insulted us by making it harder for us to speak, and now you are refusing to do your job.
Thank you for your comment.
Do your job.
Next up will be Lori Johnson.
Lori Johnson.
Your three minutes start now.
Gil, hi, good morning, everyone. Can you, everyone hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for listening to me. I just really have a comment. I've been at the campus at the college for 21 years, over 21 years. For 17 years, I enjoyed working at the college. I was a coordinator for the Office of Minority Student Affairs. I advised students. I ran several programs within that program. When they canceled the program, they transferred me over to the Learning Center. That's when the nightmare began. I had to file several complaints against the director because the director was really abusing me. Finally, they transferred me over to academic advising. I have over 20 years' experience in advising, but when I was transferred over to advisement, they put me as a work study. All I did was sign students in. Now, I understand with the budget cuts, I get it with the pandemic, but you know, the sad thing about it is that out of the four, of four full-time, if I, I'm sorry, administrators, I'm the only one that's being let go, and I make the less money. I was planning on retiring when I turned 60. I'm like in-between. I know my last day is June 30th. I, I get it, I get it. But you know, to be honest with you, I was really treated poorly. I never got a chance to show my skill. But you know, to be honest with you, I was really treated poorly. I never got a chance to show my skills. I had, they told me I was not qualified as an academic advisor, even though I've been doing advisement for twenty years. I have helped a lot of students, but that doesn't count. I have a master's degree, but that doesn't count. And that's all the comment I have to say.
Thank you for your remarks. Next speaker?
One second. Next speaker will be Herb Tarbos.
Good morning, folks.
Your time starts now.
All right, Herb Tarbos. I'm from Piscataway. I'm also the co-founder of a group called Voter Choice New Jersey, working on electoral reform to fix our broken political system in New Jersey. I want to thank the folks on this call. You all seem like very competent, caring and committed individuals. Again, I'm a local political activist focusing on good government, democratic representation and fiscal responsibility. And I think it's no secret that in Middlesex County, we have what I would call a shadow government, which engages in insider dealing, patronage and manipulation and retaliation against folks who don't sort of toe the line. I I've come to learn some disturbing news this week. And I'm calling for the immediate, immediate resignation and removal of Mr. Gary Taffet from this board. As Charlie indicated, he was compelled to pay seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, including a two hundred thousand dollar civil penalty to settle a complaint by the Securities and Exchange Commission for insider trading. I believe that this disqualifies him from any sort of of representation of the public. As a taxpayer in Middlesex County for twenty-eight years, I absolutely object to Mr. Taffet's continued participation on this board. Likewise, I'm calling for the immediate removal of Chairman Power and trustee Mark Finkelstein based on the results and the conclusion of the case of Maureen Lawrence versus Middlesex County College. There's, you know, Ms. Lawrence claimed that she suffered retaliation by being fired from her position as a compliance officer for exposing clear and illegal conflicts of interest by Mr. Finkelstein and Ms. Power in connection with their membership on this board. I believe that all three of these individuals are not, are not qualified to continue membership on this board. As again, as a member of a taxpayer from Middlesex, Middlesex County for twenty-eight years and being, and what I've learned about the the political machine and the the backroom dealings and the manipulation and retaliation that occurs, these individuals have no business in public service, none whatsoever. They need to be removed from this board immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your remarks. Rich?
Final speaker will be Catherine Hunt. Catherine, your three minutes start now.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Well, it's really great hearing about the great service that you've put in. And I want to thank them all for all the work that they've done over the years. Also like to encourage Mr. Taffet to resign. It looks like he has quite a history of playing the play. And I believe another way of saying that is insider trading. And I'd like to ask if he may be having a current AG and resignation. Well, I think that it would probably be with the committee to accept his resignation and to help him find out the procedure for resignation and accept his resignation rather quickly. And I think that the points taken about Powell and Powell and Finkelstein as well. We need to clean some things up around the board here and hope that you folks can do that. I, it looks like it's about time for some house cleaning. And we really appreciate, you know, a little house cleaning there. And appreciate the time that you've given me and you all have a good day and get a broom. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich?
Final speaker.
Are there, are there any other speakers?
No, Chairman Power.
Okay. This concludes the public comments from the, at this meeting. Oh, are we going into executive session? Okay.
Yes, Chairman Power.
I would like a motion of the board. Excuse me. Too much coffee. To go into executive session. This is to discuss a financial matter and no action will be taken at this time. May I have a motion?
So move that, Chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Clarabelle. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Seventy-five thousand dollars. That's how much was paid to settle the lawsuit. You should ask Mr. Hoffman about it in executive session.
So trustees, you'll be moved into a private breakout room and we will return once the executive session is over. So that will be happening in the next few seconds and just wait and you'll appear in the room.
Okay, are we in executive session?
They're not quite there yet, Chairman Power. They're still working on it. It'll take about another thirty seconds. Okay.
Do we have to hit join?
I don't think so. You'll see a little bit, there'll be a message on your screen. You can wait and it happens automatically. Join. Is join on there?
It's on there. Do we have to hit it?
You can hit join, yes.